Thirty. So.
That's right.
Awesome. Well, good evening, everyone. Let's welcome to the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four Planning and Zoning Meeting for the.
We can all stand for the. Hi, glad to be with you to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic of Florida. One nation for God into this liberty and justice.
Everybody. Ms. Lee.
Finally, indicated. Michael.
President.
Michael.
President.
President.
Hey, Taylor.
Here. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Excellent agenda item is the public forum, and what we do is we open it up to anybody on the audience that would like to talk on a planning and zoning topic. Anyone here like to talk about planning and zoning topic? Forum?
Yeah, for things that are not on the.
Oh, thing, I'm sorry. Thank you, Liz. Uh, we're having a public forum. Anyone want to talk about things on the agenda?
Okay.
Hearing them will close the public forum. Uh, number four on the items approval of the minutes is everybody had a chance to look at the nine nineteen twenty three meeting that we had. September was the last time we met, September?
Crazy.
We shall. Okay. Time flies. It is, does. So. We had a chance to take a look at that? Any questions or comments on the meetings minutes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I can motion to approve the meeting minutes from nine nineteen twenty twenty three.
Okay, second by Nancy, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, okay. Old business. Brad, how are you tonight?
Fantastic, sir.
Talk some old business.
I'll do my best.
Okay, sir, I'll let you go.
Uh, just for the record, my name is Brad Kurnis, Clay Trim, and I serve as your contracted town planner. So I got elected to to give you the report of the town building official. Um, as y'all recall, there was a discussion about doing a change to your code. Sort of Winter Garden requiring the multi-family structures, the bottom floor to be of the block type materials. So your town manager and steward asked the building official to look at that request because that is something that's part of he needs to do is what his responsibilities are. And that's the memo that you have in front of you that was submitted to Andy, um, your building official's determination, whether or not he thought it was viable. For the town to choose. Um, I've also looked into it, and I will say I do. differ with some of his with his findings. Um, what you'll see, and I'll summarize it, but I won't speak for for him. Um, is that it was interesting looking what Winter Garden did. I was quite surprised because they didn't actually follow the standard requirement as required. Um, as as your building officials said, they addressed, they changed a part of the building code. From your building official's opinion, which I agree with them. Where it says you can't change the materials that the building code allows for. That's something that can't be changed as a local amendment. Um, the other thing that they didn't do, he didn't, there's also requirement for cost benefit analysis to be done as part of that process. But with all that said, they did it. It was approved, got in place, nobody challenged it, so it's there. There. So no, I mean, that's what they did. That's what they had. But what you see, what your building official has said, he doesn't support the change because he does, he feel your building official feels that it is not allowable to make that change under the Florida building code. So again, I'm presenting his information. Um, ultimately, that's the building official. That's the determination he's making. Um, he he is open to discussion more if y'all have more questions about it. Um, but like I said, I do understand where he's coming from. Uh, but that is his recommendation to the town.
Okay, so just to refresh everybody, just, uh, we we had discussed a while back about, um. Any builders that come into town, whether it be a multifamily builder or anybody else, that we would look at more superior type products for them to use in their in their building of the building, which would hopefully increase the value, uh, which it would and probably weed out those builders that just come in and knock it out and and leave type thing. So that was, that's what we asked the, uh, Brad to look into and and stuff. So. That was what Brad came back with.
I have a question for this. So if he is making the assumption that it's not allowed on the building code, but. If you drive anywhere south E Hall Junction, it is required multi-family to be CMU or concrete equivalent, uh, south of there. It it's on both both sides of Florida, and all the way down, it's required to be CMU blocks. So how does he come to that?
I bet I can't should have within the.
And I don't, I want to know, you know, these Miami building code, and I don't know if that may play into it, but I probably the design. The, is it the wind loads in the region that you're in, right? It's just like Miami day for for sliders and windows and glass.
Right, right.
But one certain areas, so that's probably.
So without the wind zone map, it might be, it might be in that wind zone map.
Right.
Or showing, hey, you got to have this type of construction.
Right.
Beefier construction because of the wind.
My my. In stating it's not possible, it's obviously possible, but codify that into a building code. I, my, my, my simple statement is that they're doing it, right? So how do we? How, I mean, other than we obviously can't change the wind load or the wind zone that we're in. I would.
I could maybe add some perspective. Um, I think part of the analysis is probably exposure to litigation. And, you know, some some governing bodies of cities and towns decide, hey, that's a risk we're willing to run and will pay to fight that fight. And it just doesn't make sense in other places. So that could also be part of the judgment, um, judgment call that's going on there. I I don't know. That's, I could speculate that maybe they said, we'll see if somebody challenges it and, you know, let the chips fall where they may. So we'll do that.
Question, question on that Stephanie, I don't know if you know, um, are municipalities allowed to put more stringent requirements on the Florida building code? So Florida building code would say it's X, and this is the, this is the bare minimum we're allowed to do. Can municipalities say, well, you can do the bare minimum, but we also want you to do this to give it up a little more.
I think it depends on the nature of the requirement. So as Brad was saying, there's a restriction of prohibition against requiring different materials, right? So that that would fall into the category of things that we probably shouldn't do. Um, there might be some other exceptions for. Uh, areas where local governments can regulate. I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I could look into it.
Yeah, I'd be very curious to see what is, what is the guidelines as far as the ability for a municipality, a town, a city, or anyone to to. Let's call it strengthen, uh, existing code.
Okay. What are the areas in which she?
Yeah, what areas would you have without getting in trouble? You could sit there and go, yeah, like we're blocking block construction versus wood frame, you know, that type of thing.
Mr. Chairman, I believe in the memo on the second page, um, the building official, it's points one, two, three, and four. That is what he provided. Those are the standards that that has to be evaluated for local government to do more stringent, which you can. And just real quick, just so everybody can hear what they are. So if you're going to do it, that first one, you have to say what code you're mending. So. And, you know, when you say that one, but, um, here's the first one is such additional requirements cannot discriminate against materials, products, or construction techniques of demonstrated capabilities. So that's the one that's that he took on here about why his town should do this. Um, next one is that such additional requirements may not introduce a new subject not addressed in the Florida building code. Finally, the amendments are more stringent than the minimum standard. So you can't lessen it, but you can make it more stringent as long as you follow those. And then there's the procedure, which he, I don't know, invited that in here. In terms of the analysis, you do have to do that cost benefit. As Stefan said, you know, the builders, you need to demonstrate to the builders that there's a. The cost of that implementation, there's a enough of a benefit to outweigh that cost and the positive outcome of that. So there's a, there's a lot of analysis goes through it. But again, if a local government doesn't do it and it goes through the process, nobody challenges it, fights it, the fact, now, another thing that happens, I think that's occurring here right now. When the new building code gets updated, all local amendments have to be resubmitted to the state. So what happens if if that local amendment doesn't make it into the regular Florida building code, if it stays as a regular local amendment, not a Florida building code standard requirement. When they adopt the new building code, and I believe there's one about to get adopted now. Um, all these local amendments have to get resubmitted, reapproved under the new Florida building code. Because part of it is the Florida building code may amend or change to address something that may be.
That's a local.
So there is, so so this will be another round, and it'll be interesting to see if what happens if.
Yes, I think the new building code went into effect January first.
I was thinking on two thousand and twenty four, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Uh, I think it's, yeah.
And one thing I'll check, I'll go back and look, is we can go on the Florida Building Commission and see what it says about the status of the Winter Gardens Amendment to see if it shows that it's been. You know, it's been rescinded because of the new code, and it's got to be resubmitted, I believe, what happened.
Yep.
Um, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, what I'll say is what I've been noticing, you know, I've been working with the Alana Little here. Um, your design. We were hoping with the block requirement, I can tell you, we have many, many conversations with folks that are thinking that the town of Oakland is easy. And and not hard, and and when we share with them, you know, how important the character is to the town, and we share with them all the design requirements of your design districts. That that does turn away folks that don't want to do like a good project. Doesn't get to the level where you're saying, but I think it does.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Brad, for your help on that. Appreciate it. Hey, guys, any other questions on that topic? We move on? No, okay. We had a moratorium. Can we not do another moratorium or on the apartments?
More coming on the multifamily expired, I believe.
August, I think it was.
Yeah, this year, I mean.
Last year, yeah.
I smutted the commission to to look into and find out. I mean, I don't know if there's anybody coming in.
Nobody, no. What we have coming, we have in process that are at conceptual level, we have nothing, everything that's coming in is a mixed use project.
Yeah.
It's, there's no standalone multifamily because the way your design standards, where your codes are currently structured. That's really the only way multifamily now can come here to the town of Oakland is through a mixed use project. So we have, I can, I'll just kind of give you a quick review. So we've had submitted right now two compliant amendments, plan development on State Road fifty. Um, at Fourth Street and fifty, and that was one of the areas that EDSA did that vision plan for. Um, that amendment has been submitted. It's in process, and what they're looking to do is do exactly what the EDSA vision plan said should go there. So they're doing a mix, they're proposing a mixed use village there that'll have retail office as well as residential in that property. And then across there, um. I think it's called Oakland Mixed Use Village, the property that Mr. Scalia owns on fifty that's behind the growth, it runs on fifty. Um, he's also submitted the conference plan amendment and rezoning to do a mixed use center there with a mix of residential office and retail also. So everything that looks like it's coming toward into the town now that has kind of multifamily, I'll say. Is is mixed development. It's not a standalone by itself apartment complex. It is a mix with, so that's, that's what you'll be seeing probably in the next thirty to sixty days in front of you all, um, as that comes through the process.
Okay. Good. Good, good. All right. So, uh, moving on to the new business, uh, is first one up is eighty Mill Holland Street, and it's a pool easement encroachment variance request.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I don't have PowerPoints today, so I'm going to go back to my old days because, actually, it's because this is my thirtieth year being a planner, so I feel like thirty years ago, so. Um, it was pre-PowerPoint, but, uh, but everything that I'll speak about, it's within your packet, and I can refer to pages as we go through it. So, Ed, Mr. Chairman, this is a variance request. It's in Mill Holland Street. Um, the owners are Stimmels. They are here this evening with us. And I'm sure that they'll like to speak with you all. So the Stimmels, um, they have a single family home that was constructed.
Stimmel.
I'm sorry. Um, have a single family home that was built in two thousand and six. They bought it a few years after that. Um, it's within the Southern Oaks at Oakland Shores subdivision. So what what they're requesting to do is to construct a swimming pool at the rear of their home. And what the situation is, and I will say it's a complex situation. It really is. It's a, it's not a, it's a difficult situation. Um, as you see in your packet, in what Mr. Stimmel submitted, was when the home was originally permitted in two thousand and six. Um, that on the building plans that were permitted, there was an area at the rear of the home. That showed area and was labeled as future pool, future deck retaining by others in the future. It was on, it was on the plans in two thousand and six. It has the stamp of the town leaving that. And so it was shown on those two thousand and six plans. Unfortunately, the permit was never submitted for the pool or for the deck or for the screen. No, no additional permitting happened for those three pieces. Even though it was shown on that as future coming, it never got permitted. There was never a permit applied for, a permit was never issued. The one thing that was permitted was constructed and finalized is the retaining wall. That retaining wall did come through permitting with the town. Um, they did get it finalized, um, last year or two years ago now in twenty twenty two. Um, so they did construct the retaining wall, and it is there in the final closure inspection by your previous building provider, EDCS, um, in two thousand and twenty two. But what happens is because the pool was never constructed, it was never built. When they come forward now to to do the permitting, we have to apply the current code and what the current requirements are. Because there was nothing ever approved to actually build anything. Um, in in your current code, uh, you're, you you require pools and decks and screen enclosures. Um, to not encroach into any easement within section three, two, B and three, two, two, three, J. Um, it has a requirement that the decks can be no closer than five feet to the rear side property line and not in easement. Pool is the water ten feet, not in easement. And the screen enclosure, same setbacks of the deck, not located in an easement. So what the proposed plan, which is in your package, uh, that Mr. Stimmel submitted, that he's looking to build. Is is and encroaches into that easement. Total encroachment is about five feet into the easement of that. Three feet of it is a pool and two feet of it is the deck going into that easement in that area. Um, and then the screen enclosure is proposed to be mounted on top of the retaining wall. And which is what it showed in the two thousand and six permit is what the idea would have been for that. Um, that's what he's looking to get permitted today. He has not submitted for a permit yet. This came up in pre-discussions with him about him permitting a pool. And we did advise him that we have to apply the current code, which would not allow him to place the pool. See. He requested to, that's why that's here before you for a variance, because that's the only way he could do this. Um. And and in your packet, um, I, the information that was submitted, you have that, and he did provide, and he has, I see he has plans with them here this evening. Um, you know, the stamps that show the plans that were stamped previously. Of it. The other thing that we did in our review, because this has a history to it and because it's still with utility easement. Um, we did ask Mr. Parker to take a look at it, make sure, see what his, his, if he had an opinion on it or what his thoughts were, also to help us with the history of this this issue. Um, and then Mr. Parker also had the town's consulting engineer, CPH, Alan Lane, he took a look at it also. Uh, Mr. Lane's letter is part of your package, and and I put Mike's comments in there as well. Um, I'll summarize it, but Mike's here, he can speak for himself if I don't say this this correctly. Um, initially, you know, Mike's response was he really wasn't supportive of the variance. Um, um, he did. Then write us an updated comment after Mr. Lane looked at it. And Mike's position what is, and can he's here, he can say if I say this wrong, is he would be okay with a variance that would only allow for the deck encroachment. And then you also the, um, screen enclosure going on top of the the retaining wall. So I think that's where Mike ended up, his thoughts with this variance, but he would not support the pool water being approaching with that area. Um, Mr. Lane, as you see in his write-up, um, he looked at it as an engineer, which I appreciate. Uh, Mr. Lane, uh, he he was, he didn't come to a final conclusion, but you'll see here. Uh, Mr. Lane's concerns were one, he was concerned about the retaining wall. And if the pool were to be approved, whether that would be structurally able to handle that, a construction. Um, honestly, that would be an issue to be addressed. If this was approved and the permit would be issued, that would be something part of the permitting of the pool that that would get addressed. But but I think what was important, what Mr. Lane said, and then this is where I fall with it as well. Is that he can, this property can have a pool that doesn't encroach at all into the easement. He would have to reduce the width of the pool water, bring it in, so he doesn't have as wide of a pool. But there is sufficient room back there to have a pool. It doesn't have to be as large as he wants. I understand why his plan is that way because that goes back to, um, two thousand and six. But when we look at it from your today's code, he can build a pool behind there without a variance. Um, your code would allow that to occur. So as you see in our evaluation. Is we, as your staff, we don't see that there's a hardship here because he can construct something back there. He can do it. We also looked at the subdivision to see if there are other pools that are in a similar situation that he has, where he has the easement in the back. And pools, and we don't see any that encroach there. Now, there are not many that are like that, but we don't see where that happens either. Um, so we don't, we, we, we need that it meets the criteria for the issuance of a variance as we document in our staff report. And we do, um, recommend denial the variance. Um, Mike, is there anything you want to add or anything?
Nothing. You did a good job of explaining what I said.
But Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I know the African absolutely would like to provide their information inside.
Sure. You, um, you said there was a dimension, and I don't see it called out on.
She's, no, we, it was failed, we scaled it, it was scaled, so, and that actually came from Mr. Lane when he did his evaluation.
With the pool itself, the edge of the pool, you might up to the input easement line? Is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
It could, it could, because it would meet that ten foot setback from the rear property line.
But he would not be able to put a deck beyond this.
Correct.
Even though there's a wall already built into the, uh.
So unfortunately, right, we have to, that's why, that's why it's before you this evening.
But in two thousand and six, that wouldn't have been acceptable.
Could have been, and I don't know what the code said back then, and and I can't say for sure when they approved the plans, because the plans were approval of the building permit. But the permit plans did show a future pool and deck in this general area. So. Um, whether that meant they approved the pool too, I I can't say yes or no to that. But I can tell you what we do now is when we have a situation where someone does the house and on their plans, it'll show future pool and deck. We very make it very explicit. In ours, only approval, we're not approving anything with the pool and the deck. We're only approving the house because we want to avoid this kind of situation where it's a little bit ambiguous, what was actually, we're not approved in the past.
Could I, before we continue, just as a procedural matter, um, for this determination, the board is sitting in its quasi judicial capacity. And, um, Florida law requires that any decision that is made by the board tonight must be based on competent and substantial evidence. So I would ask that, um, there be a motion to accept the staff packet into the record for tonight, and and then it can constitute constant, um, excuse me, competent and substantial evidence.
I may wish. Staff.
Thank you.
Second, anybody?
I'll sign.
Second, my mic.
Bye.
Okay. Um, at the end of the point of order, um, there's a person on the board that sat on the HOA at the same time in this neighborhood. Is, do they need to recuse themselves of?
Is the person still on the HOA at the, at this time?
Yes.
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 Um. Hmm, I would, uh, I would say that you should refuse yourself, yes.
Don't want us in trouble.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So just one. You're recommending that the cage is the green enclosure not be allowed?
We're recommending that you could, if you were to reduce the size, you could have the pool, the pool deck and screen enclosure meet the required requirements. Not have to be in a cage, but not have to be mounted on top of the retaining.
Yeah.
So the retaining wall would be.
Past.
Past.
That's right, and it's already built and in the easement.
Yes.
Okay. Trying to get my head.
The backs.
Yeah, trying to get. So you just pull everything forward. I mean, you just still have that retaining wall. You're just not matching onto the retaining wall.
And and you can see on the survey, there's that little notch, and that's where this issue is of the easement and retaining side, the wall is on that. It's the backside of that notch there that you see on the survey. Um, it would be the, here, you can see it clearer. Standing right in.
This is the retaining wall.
Yes, sir, and that's the retaining. You can see that on the survey.
I'm, I'm just. Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of, you know, I think the wall back in the day, it was constructed for this particular purpose, just plans and I stated that, but. Um, and I understand the, the, the ten-foot utility easement, um. Being back there, um. And and all those houses, you know, all the houses in Southern Oaks have a ten-foot utility easement that are, that that runs on the backs of the houses. Um, not that there's any utilities back there, but, um. And I guess a question for maybe Brad or maybe Mike is, uh, you know, there's, is there a possibility of the vacation of an easement? On.
Uh, that. Decision. But one thing we need to take into, the owner, I think, needs to take into consideration that that easement is in favor of the town. And if, uh, if we ever need to need that easement, the improvements that are in the easement have to be removed. So not to say that it's going to happen, but it it may.
And it, in those, in those improvements, if allowed into the easement, would be on behalf of the owner to, uh, pay for and, uh, take care. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That'd be at their expense.
Yes.
Okay.
Even if a variance is granted?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that would be documented. We would document that.
Yes, it would be good, because the easement still exists. It doesn't go away by the granting of the variance. It's still there.
Right, right. Um. Mr. Stimmel, would you like to?
Uh, thank you. And, you know, Todd raises about, about lately, look at these plans. Um, and I think, uh, what I guess I'm trying to explain is, is this ninety-foot-long retaining wall. It is seven feet high, was built there for a pool to be built there. Nineteen times in these plans, it is called out. That is the pool. And that the fence, the screen enclosure will be mounted on top of the retaining. Nineteen times stamped plans. In real estate, we can't take it with us. We get what? We get a bundle of rights. When I bought my house, it had already been built, planned or stamped. I had the right to build a pool. Why else would they build a hundred thousand dollar wall that is seven feet high, solid concrete, three thousand PSI, steel, top to bottom, drains on both sides. That go all the way out and all the way down. Our soils are so bad down on the lake that, um, it's, it's not even be, be deep pool because just can't get down deep enough. Uh, in these plans, they even called out for where the electricity was to be run, and they ran a conduit from one side where the pool equipment was going to be, all the way over to the power box. There's a call out for a gas box on the plants. The back of the house was stubbed out for water, so electricity for a summer kitchen. That's what was built to be built to do. All I'm asking for is to not have my rights taken, that I can't build a pool, which was called out in the plan, instead of standard part of the county and the city. I came to the, uh, we, I have a shipment advanced on, uh, in sixteen, paid a deposit for our, our pool to be built. And our builder, our pool builder went down to the town to pull a building permit, and they found out that there was still an open permit on the retaining wall. So by the time we had, uh, universal engineering come out and look at it, uh, they said, we need to do some soil borings. It is soil borings. And then they came out and they said, well, we need to do some boring up next to the wall to make sure it was actually built, because in plans called for the, uh, retaining wall to be seven feet under the ground, and then it sits on a, a, uh. Foundation, and it just calls out in the plan. And it just calls out in the plans that it can't exceed one foot from that bottom self of the wall. So we had them dig the pole. And sure enough, they, they couldn't get down far enough. They couldn't get through that gumbo, gumbo clay. So then Universal, the universe came back and gave us another report and said, you need to have the wall pinned. So would you explain what pinning is?
Try the wall back into the back.
Out of the hill.
Yeah.
Exactly. So we had that done. That was finally finished in twenty twenty. We kind of put our pennies together and said, let's go ahead and build the school. And I'm here to, I came in and spoke with staff, actually I don't, it's Todd and sort of what we wanted to do. And he said, well, the building codes have changed since twenty twenty and you can't do that. So I'm here to ask for a variance. I want, I want my bundle of rights. Be able to build a pool in my backyard and I'd like to do it just like it was on the plans where the retained wall is seven feet tall and then there's a six foot, there's five feet heavy vegetation and another six foot fence. And then our neighbors behind us have a cage and a Vibram hedge that you can't even see the cage. So from a visual standpoint, it's really not impeding anybody's vision. From a practical standpoint, you know, this won't build a pool. I want my rights, my bundle of rights. Happy to answer any questions.
You know, there was, was there any objections to any of the surrounding residents or?
No. My neighbor here is, is, uh, here and he has no problems with it and the, the other folks on the other side are, are. I think it would be equally as hard to remove that retaining wall as it would to remove a pole.
Yep.
Yep. We need to build that wall if you're going to build a pool. And it's called out in the plans, so it's asking for a right to.
And Brad, you said in oh six, you're not clear about. Allowable. If I can say answer to that.
Oh, right.
Roll them back.
Yeah, roll them backwards, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any questions here on the table? Anybody have any concerns or questions or anything?
Is, is the timeline on? What, no one? If a permit is not pulled for a pool that was approved back in, or stamped in oh six, oh six and sixteen or whatever the right date is, there's a timeline, right?
It's six months. Once you have a permit issued, you have to have active inspections at least every six months to prove the permit active. If you don't, the permit will expire. But, but just so there, there was never a permit issued for the swimming pool.
That was going to be my expert. There was never ever, so this stamp is just, it was on the drawings, but it was for the house.
It showed a future pool, but there was never a permit issued for the pool, the deck or the screen enclosure. Any, oh, yes.
So the permit, so the, the, the wall itself, though, was, was constructed and built with the house and pulled at the same time as the house plans. Is that correct?
I believe from when I looked at the permitting, it was later. It was, it was, I think it may come out like, because I, it's hard to find because I can only pick up the records from twenty fifteen when the house was and I, I see, as Mr. Stimmel said, in twenty sixteen, but I don't know exactly when the wall was originally constructed.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, his plans here and I see the stamp. You know, zoning plan approved on the, on the wall itself. There's another stamp. I'm guessing it's probably for the house itself. And I'm just trying to find, I'm just trying to tie back. If the house plans were pulled, did the house plans include the building of the wall at the same time? And if, was there a separate permit though pulled for the wall? Because you'd said, hey, the wall had not been signed off. So, so, but it goes back to, well, if, if the permit's sitting there and no activity in six months and the permit expires after six months, then it's null and void and, and you're, you're done.
I, I can say if, if it was included on the original house plans, it would not have gotten a CO. Because that would have been required to finish all.
Finish, yeah. To get your final.
It would have had to have been post.
Yeah.
Construction.
And, and I think that if Stimmel's bought that house, a title search would have to be done to find out if there's any outstanding issues or permits or hold for that house. That would be not. You know, I, I, I his plans are showing there was, there's, so the wall's there. So the, I think the big issue is now do you hold him to an oh, oh six standard where he's kind of, all right, this is the intent, the wall was built, the intent was to put a pool back there, but now unfortunately he's not filling the pool until today and now new standards have kicked in, new codes have kicked in. So he's, he's kind of stuck in between old and new. Is what it is.
You buy a lot and you're going to build a house on it, but then they go and change the building codes to put hurricane right, flips on the roof, right? Just because you bought the lot before they did that.
Right.
You get a, you get a pass and the, and the wall itself probably more than likely, I'm sure there's engineer plants. And he said, here's, look at it. Hey, this wall's substantial and it can hold back the earth. Because I will say that that does drop off. I mean, you're talking eight feet. I mean, by the time you go to the top, I mean, the elevation say six, but it's all those houses that are set down, down to the lake and it drops off.
The town's permitting records, it says in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, when they did the workup, every yard was engineering reports to do, it's that and it is in your records.
And those engineering reports say that the wall is.
After they did the.
Okay. Yes, the wall, they're, they're, they're accepting it and then that if they dig the hole, they dig their pole down five feet. There's no fear of the wall.
The inspector at the time that signed off on it, that's, they, they, they decided on it. And. So that, it, and also just point out, Mr. Lane in his letter, he was still concerned if the parents were approved. As, there should have been a safety rail on top of that. That, that the annuals are there. Mr. Lane's been dealing with the screen enclosure. It still feels there would be a, a risk. Yeah, a safety rail on top of that, which he.
So the building permit shows that the, the wall itself was pulled in two thousand and five. So it's a pretty, pretty, pretty high number. So it's probably towards the end of the year, but it's a two thousand and five building permit, so.
And the house was final when?
In two thousand and six.
So it was during mid-construction of the house, probably.
Yeah.
And you said you were permitted to be done by Orange County.
Okay. And then Orange County and then, so oh five, middle of the construction of the house, probably to complete, same time the house was completed or CO'd at that time.
Okay. So if you try to pull the plans from Orange County, because those are more than ten years old, they don't have the plans anymore.
No archives.
Well, I believe that.
Yeah. Good. Good. Okay. So before then is to, do we want to approve the pool setting back into that little notch area of the, of the retaining?
It's the ideal. And it would approach how, how far into that notch area? I'm sorry. That's what I was trying to figure out.
About five feet. About half way. And that would be.
At the, at the furthest point, it would be five feet. At the shortest point, it would be a foot.
Half.
Sure. Yeah. Okay.
Also, under your code, in order to approve this variance, you are required to find that all six of the criteria have that. Brad starts discussing this part two on page four of his memo. And, and I think in, in my opinion, the most important point is five. The variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land, building or structure. And so I would just maybe I would ask that if if the board is going to approve the variance, that's a, that's what's finding.
Okay. So a question I have, maybe this is for Mr. Stimmel. I know you have the pool set back from the house about six feet. You know, is there the possib- possibility? Tell me if I'm getting into designing. Please tell me if I'm getting into like problem solving or designing. Is there the possibility of bringing that pool closer to the house? To make a smaller deck against the house and the pool?
I think, I think code is like four and a half feet.
Yeah, I was going to say three. I'm not sure if it's three feet.
I think it's four and a half. I was told by the pool contractor. And we can do that. We pull that out or we could probably get get that out of the three feet. If it's the pool is the problem, then why don't we just pull the pool out of the easement and just make it decking and attach the, attach the screen enclosure to the retaining wall. I'd be agreeable to that.
So keep the water out of the variance. That's right. Keep the water out of the pool itself. Yeah.
Keep the water out of the ten foot.
Would, would, would that pull this out? No, that was, no, quite no.
Well, the pool. I pulled the, the pool, quarter of the pool completely out of the ten foot easement, but what he's asking is the, on the back side of that pool would be concrete or, you know, deck material, pavers, whatever. And I don't know what your finish is. If it's concrete, pavers or
Concrete, pavers.
Pavers against the, against the wall. And then also you want, still connect the enclosure on top of the, on top of the wall.
Which would alleviate the need for the rail then.
The, your, your contract, your engineer thinks it's so.
I don't. That would be up to the building official when you go through the permit.
Yeah. And honestly, we do. We have a logo that is and we've never had any problems with the retaining wall and, and anything like that. But if, if we need to do some reinforcement, screen enclosure to make that come up to engineers, that would be a building issue. I think what he's calling out is just a handrail. So what I'm saying, report, so. Won't be super extensive.
So, Steph.
We brought some man to help us with the barns. In the pot space, really well done. And, um, it's definitely beautiful. So we've spent a lot of time and energy on this.
So I'll, I'll ask Mike Parker. So if the pool's actually out of the easement and it's just pavers put into the easement along with the walls, that.
Well, it's still subject to being removed. If, if there's an issue, it's a lot less expensive for the property owner.
Right.
To do that. It's against, it's against the current code.
I know.
You know, I can't say this is approved.
Trying to make everybody.
Maybe, maybe I guess. Let's say that retain wall has to be pulled out and they got a pool there. What, what's going to happen?
Our neighbor's pool is coming up.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I was, that's what I was pointing out at the beginning was that the wall's already inside the ten foot easement.
Yeah.
I mean, if they, if the code was there at that point in time, they should have said, hey, the wall has to be right at that ten foot easement, right, straight up from there. But that obviously was not the two thousand and six requirement at that point. I don't think, I mean.
A disrespect that they had to pin it back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Leads me to believe that if they had to remove the wall. I mean, you, you've got, he's already talked about the soil issue. So it's, yeah. We'll have bigger problems than, than.
Yeah. I, I, it, it's almost like you're not going in there and no matter what.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Um, to tear it up.
Stephanie, does, if, if, if Mr. Stimmel's saying that, hey, we'll just pull the pole out of the easement and then allow the pavers and the, and the screen enclosure on top of the wall. Is there anything he has to do here or is there anything where we just noted in the?
I, I can't, I would say an application needs to be submitted or there needs to be some sort of pre-application conference with staff so that we can look at all angles of what's really being proposed. It's, it's hard to make that determination as we sit here right now.
Okay.
I, I guess, Wes, I think in terms of the variance, the, it's quite. The way I've always, if the variance, if we're adjusting it tonight and we're reducing what he's asking in terms of the variance, I think could do that. Stephanie said, though, if you approve that, then as we go through permitting, based on if you approve it, those are the issues, you know, we get into the details of the engineering and making sure everything works correctly. So I think in terms of you all, because as everything was noticed and everything has been processed, it was approaching into easement with the pool and the water, pool water, the deck and the closure. What, what Mr. Stimmel has offered is reducing that encroachment by bringing the pool out with the deck. So I think he would be okay on the variance side, but we would just, as he goes through the permitting, like any applicant, it's not structurally correct and proper.
Yeah. And then going back to your variance, six criteria, I think, number one, I would agree that there is a special condition. Here elevations and change in that lot as well. So I know the, the property's rectangular and it's great size, but there are some factors as far as, I, I believe as far as elevation changes that would require any improvements on the back of that house would require a wall for that. So. Okay, guys, any other questions or anything about? Anything? On this. And if not, then let's entertain a motion and figure out what we're going to do here.
We do that. If it's different.
So in front of us, just to recap, in front of us is the applicant has agreed to pull the pool itself, the water. When I say pull, there's the water line itself out of the easement, which would set the pool inside the billable area outside of that, inside that little notch area, he's requested to do his decking, which would be pavers, which would be a lot easier to remove if there was an issue. We also have the issue that there's already an existing seven foot tall concrete block wall that's already inside that easement. That's, that was approved back in oh six. And then on the other thing on top of that is a screen enclosure to attach to the top of that wall instead of building a screen enclosure up on the backside of that wall. So that's where we're at. Confused? Mic's out. And, and if you can, I can, I can, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to approve variance.
Yeah, with what we.
With, with, with the pool, screen enclosure attaching to the wall. With the water out of the, out of the variance and papers to be included in that space between the water line and the cage.
Okay. So motion, is there a second? Second, Nancy, all, all in favor?
I'll, I'll.
Yes, ma'am.
I would strongly advise that we have this application brought forward on paper so that everyone can be
Okay.
on the same page as to what is being discussed before a vote being taken on a different variance from what is brought before the board tonight.
Okay. Good advice. So, so you would like Mr. Stimmel to come back and refill out the application and come back next month?
A different variance from what is being proposed tonight is, is on the table. Yes, I think we need to have a separate hearing and have that of those documents before the board is, they get off on the same page about what is really.
Okay. So that would be him, be him coming back with the revised pool water line itself out of the easement and showing a screen enclosure and pavers in the back.
Yes.
Just like we just discussed.
Four hundred and fifty.
Okay. Okay. So that's what we're going to do. So we table this one until.
Since there's been a motion. And if the board is going to deny that motion based on the advice that I given, then we need to take a vote on that motion and the vote will be a nay.
This motion, I mean, in the agenda or the one we just settled?
Okay.
Knowing that he's going to come back. He's not getting penalized. He's just going to come back with.
Yeah, it's just denying.
Okay.
For the board right now. It's not denying a future request.
So can I make a motion to deny it since I made the motion to?
When, when there is a pending motion, that has to be voted on before another motion can be.
So they need to, maybe guys, yes.
Hi. Yes.
I apologize.
Oh my gosh, Roberts. Oh my gosh, Roberts. Well, that's what she's saying. So what we're gonna do is we're, we, we, we just, we already said, okay, we're gonna agree to this, this and this, I guess. We just had to say, okay, no, and then you come back and fill the proper paperwork out. It's not procedural, procedural.
And we'll have it back at your February meeting.
Okay, so the motion was made, it was seconded, so. Um. All in.
Do we withdraw it? Do we withdraw the previous motion?
No, we need to take a motion and basically kill.
Alright, so I'm gonna say all in favor to deny the motion and the second that was made.
Is that right?
Say aye. Aye.
So, Ebony, we don't have to do, do the, uh, take any act on this um, encroachment on the agenda.
If the applicant has requested that we table this and if you're going to come back with a revised set of plans, then, then yes, we don't have to take any further action on it.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so Mr. Semmel, sorry. See you in a month, maybe. Okay, thank you, sorry, thank you. How do you go with that, Elise? We have a lot of, alright. Interesting one, I've had that.
Don't give us.
Excellent. Let's go with uh, new business and it's uh, line item B and it's three oh two East Oakland Avenue. And that is the setback variance request. This is a little house right here on Star and Oakland Avenue.
Thank you, Chairman. So, yeah, this request is a variance through East Oakland Avenue. Um, you all may remember, um, this is a, a property that was before new about a year ago, everyone was starting it. Where they went through a small scale land disrepair zoning from, from residential commercial to provide version of that existing home to an office, professional office use, uh, real estate office use. So they are in the process of, through that, that permitting to do that revision or do that, that changeover. And one of the, one of the things they're looking to do is they're gonna, they want to do a small two hundred square foot addition to the building. There's a notch front corner of the building, they're gonna fill that in, um, to help internal state. It still meets all the setbacks, same. This is a, one of the unusual parts of your code. Your code not only had, can't be too close, but your code also said your setbacks can't be too far away. For this, so this is something unusual, is the variance is too close to them allow, the variance stats allow a building that's already there, not changing, unless addition, to remain where it is, which is much further, the requirement is twenty five and twenty feet maximum. And they're at sixty two feet, thirty four feet. So they see that, they see that maximum, that's why we have requirements for variance. Um, however, it's not changing the location of the building. They're, they're renovating the building, they're keeping the building as is. Uh, we're just doing this little addition. Uh, they're also, just so you're aware, they're in the process of a site engineering preview, uh, working with us as well as Mr. Parker. Uh, we're not done with that yet, and they're, they have that somewhat on hold, seeing, making sure they can get this approved first before they continue with that. But they're in that process. The other part, will, that'll occur is when they get ready to submit their building permits, cause they are doing some renovations. Um, that'll then come your, through your appearance review process with your appearance review board to you all in the town commission. So you will see it um, one more time when they're doing all the final permitting for the building renovations, is they're not changing it significantly, um, that's what they're doing. But that is their variance request. Um, as we evaluate it, we do find it compliant with all six criteria. Um, and maybe part of this is what we see is, you know, when this was approved last year, having this conversion is fully compliant with their comprehensive plan and what your design district called for in that Tub Street Oakland corridor for the conversion of single family homes to office, professional office uses. So that's, you know, this is bringing that forward and implementing that and, and we see that as a great benefit to the town. Um, I will also say the applicant, as we know, we had some struggles in the beginning. Um, and very good to work with as we go through this process, um, but we, we do find it compliant with all six criteria. We recommend. I'm here to answer any questions on this. Uh, Mr. Parker's been working with us also on the site engineering review. You have any questions?
Thank you, Brad. Uh, so you said twenty, just so I understand for anything in the future, twenty five to twenty feet front setback from the Oakland Avenue or from the right of way?
It's twenty five off Oakland, cause that's their primary, and then their side street, um, being Star, it's twenty on that side corner. Um, it's, it's, and, and the reason you have that in the code is in this design district, I believe it's, I mean, yeah, the town center design district, and the idea is to push these upwards the street, and that's why you have that there. But in this case, you have an existing building, it's there, I, I, quite honestly, my opinion, I think it's a good looking building, I'm glad it's being preserved and being, and, and aged over, I'm with it. So that, yeah, that's the way it is currently within your code.
Right, and, and, and maybe just a little bit arm relay there, I'm sorry, I'm trying. If it was a new building, it was gonna be built, it would be, the setbacks would be closer to the right of way.
It would pull it up.
It would pull it up. So what is those setbacks? Is it zero to three, zero?
MB is, is twenty?
Twenty.
On the front, twenty, yeah, there's like a five.
On the commercial, twenty on the commercial?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's.
Wow, really?
Yeah, okay, that's another discussion we can have.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, it's, and, and, so yeah, if, if this were to torn down and rebuild, the whole site would change. The building would come up, you know, much closer, still further than we would think. Um, it, it would just be different. And in terms of overall on their site plan, um, really the only issues that we've got outstanding with them, Mike, is working on some right of way dedication. And we still have some stormwater issues that we have to work out with them, and those are the last things on the site side, folks.
Are we looking at their site plan at all?
Um, not as part of this, but you, that is your, I mean, in terms of the variance, can't look at, it's, it is in here. Um, that's, that's the latest version that we have. Um, that's still in, like I said, we're still in review of it. We, we included this though because it does show the, the addition there at the corner of the building. Um, they are putting, you can see the parking around to the side in the back, keeping the front open. Um, they should be, I, I believe on their landscape, by most of that vegetation there in the front will remain as well. Um, with that. But you can see they don't show much in terms of stormwater on this plan that we have right now, so that's one of the, that we're working with.
So, if I'm looking at this and I'm thinking ten years in the future, five years in the futures, you know, whatever. Um, how their drive comes off, because they'd have to put a curb cut in to get to the drive, that's currently there. I'm guessing the drive probably came off the side of Star.
Uh, currently it comes off Star.
Is, is there anything that can't say the drive can't come off of Star and the drive not come off of Oakland Avenue?
I don't think there's anything prohibited now.
There's nothing prohibited, and, and as far as, you know, life safety, fire, trucks getting in and out, dead ends. And, and I'm not sure, is this discuss, are we discussing this much?
Well, this will come back to you under the design review part, as we go, but what I can do is absolutely bring that comment forward to the applicant and know that's something that's of a concern.
It might be the reason I, and it might be the reason I bring that up, is if um, a, a street escape program goes forward in the town and that intersection right there, I think was identified as a potential roundabout location that you wouldn't want the driveway to conflict where you gotta make unnecessary or undue stress on the owner to move it around. Um, he does, I mean, the good thing is the house setback sixty feet, so you got a lot of land to do something to, if you need to put something in there, so.
You go where that existing cut is right there.
That's correct. You would just go to the existing uh, curb cut there.
Yeah, that, that's part of the consideration that we're having right now on the right of way. We're, we're requesting additional right of ways from that.
Yeah.
For future inclusion, that may be, you got a good point, uh, of the uh, the driveway, um, we'll have to look into that.
Okay, okay. Alright, that would come back to us, Brad, right?
Yes, I, I'll come back to the design review, we're gonna look at this, this building.
Right.
So all, all we're allowing them to do right in this variance is to keep the house where it is.
And do a little bit of a little corner addition.
Yes, as a procedural matter, because this is also another quasi judicial um, determination, I would ask that there be a motion to move the staff packet into evidence.
I'd make a motion to move the staff packet into.
Second by Mike, all in favor? Aye, okay. So, any questions on the table? Is the applicant here or is that not here? Okay, alright. Um, no questions? No questions, we'll entertain a motion. Anyone? I don't think I'm voting now, right? Are you trying to find it? And do approvals. So, a motion for.
No, go ahead.
Say I'll make a motion for variance to allow the conversion of a single family existing home to an office with a building with an addition of approximately two hundred square foot. The maximum front yard setback along Oakland Avenue and a maximum corner side setback along Star Street access the required minimum setback distances. Okay, so motion made, second?
Second.
Second by Zach, all in favor? Aye, aye. Okay, that one's done. Last on the list.
Actually, they have a ten eighty four Selenon Street. Here's the, the contractor. Questions about? Uh, so this property is within Oakland Park. And they're looking to construct a pool at their home, um, to the rear, and as you see in the packet, there is that, oh, a little notch there at the back of the property, where there's the, the empty area to the side of the back. The pool would be located within that area. Um, what is being requested, they, they do meet the five foot mark for the setback off of the um, front of the deck. They're not approaching to any easements outside of any, all we can, some of their movements, but however, the pool water will be at six feet to that side property line. That goes through our pen. So that's, so they're requesting the variance is to reduce the ten foot requirement to the pool water to six feet. Um, and that is what the variance request is. Um, as you see in the app in, in the separate board, I'm sure the app can give you the information. Um, as part of what their process of wanting to do this pool, they were advised by the builder that this is what the proper standards were. They actually already have the HOA approval from Oakland Park, this pool has been proposed with you this evening. Um, and so that's part of how this got to where it is. They did submit for the building permit for the pool, and this is where we, we picked it up, flagged it, it said there was this issue with the, the setback, I was trying to inform you this evening. What they've done on the neighborhood that's adjacent to them, where they will be at every new side, there is an existing uh, vinyl fence on the screen, and they did actually provide as part of their information, a letter of support from that adjacent neighbor. And that is in your path. So, and they had no objection to the reduction of that request. Um, it, that, that's the issue with, in our renovation, other than we do, we did find it compliant with standards. Um, a big part of our disvaluation was it does fit in with the overall layout and character within that area and it was part of, of Oakland Park. It's, it's not intrusive, it, it, it fits in where they're looking to do it. Um, so we do think it meets all six criteria. And we do recommend approval of this variance request, and again, um, that, we can see her, she's saying, or do you have any questions of her?
Okay, thanks again. Anybody? The pool will be less than a ten feet, will be ten feet. Will be inside the. Lovable area, right?
Right, it'll be six instead of ten.
Six instead of seven. Oh, I'm sorry, would you like to come up and talk? Yeah, absolutely, please.
So, so, sorry, can we have your name for the rest of the left hand?
Okay.
Almost, thank you. Um, with this proposal, the pool line, water line will be one foot inside of the outside wall of our home.
Okay.
And the pool is nine feet wide, so without this variance, we would have a, what do you say, five foot pool?
Lap pool, a lap pool. Any questions from anybody? I don't have any. Oakland Park approving it, though, they don't source variances and stuff like that. HOA approvals, it's just at the HOA, they don't.
Point out to developer, we've been through a few developers, it was originally set up for ten feet. The neighboring municipality that's also in our neighborhood, it's a unique neighborhood, that we have two different municipalities. The other side, everyone's gotten this variance to the point where municipality, I don't think they will put you through much. It's like, okay, you gotta have this done. We're the first ones on this, you know, municipal side to do this, so.
You're on the good, you're on the good side.
It's all my friends and neighbors.
Okay. Alright, guys. Thank you. Nothing, then we'll uh, ask for a motion.
We're fully preparing to allow.
You do that again? Oh, oh, sorry, I forgot to do the thing where.
I would, I would ask that we have a motion to put this down. So.
And the, yes, get into evidence for the um, Selenon Street. At variance.
Okay, so, uh, motion made, second anybody? Second, second by Mike, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so the packets in the uh, alright, like you were saying.
I will make a motion, allow new construction of a swimming pool with a six foot setback of the pool water's edge to the side of the property line.
Alright, second anybody? Second by Zach, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. Awesome. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, anything else that we need to talk about, planning and zoning wise or questions right there? No? Have any quasi judicial stuff we need to talk about? Is that gonna be something going forward that we have to do?
Uh, requests like this, yes, we'll, we'll have to put packets into evidence and sometimes process many, like many trial.
So we talked one time before about, um, you know, looking at setbacks and pool setbacks and stuff and trying to get those more on staff type uh, review instead of going in front of uh, a P and Z board, is that still something that's being looked at?
Not that I know of. I, I can do to the ten percent effect, um, but, um, I, I wasn't aware that that was something that was being looked at.
Um, we talked about it a few years ago, maybe.
It was Oakland Park and it's back in this consultation.
Yeah.
Change did happen with development agreement, they did put in the develop, in the development agreement that five foot edge is actually in the development agreement, but it doesn't address water side of the pool setback, it only addresses the five foot. I think that was that probably, yeah.
It was, and it was also fences and, and, and other things that would be very easy. So, you know, if you're gonna get more and more of these, which we know Oakland Park's really skinny on some of those lots, I mean, do you revise for that particular area?
Well, there is a, one of the other changes that happened last year that the town commission through the development agreement, which didn't apply here. But there is now provision in the development agreement for minor setbacks, um, on, like, for the garages or other things like that. The way the development agreement now reads is, this is kind of brings up the HOA, is if the town architect for the HOA approves it and confirms it's compliant with the design intent of our town. They then can submit that when they submitted us for permit, we can approve that administratively, as long as we have approval. So there is, right? That was approved last year. So we have that possibility, um, particularly related to, to structures, and particularly related to structures that are like on the trail or backed up to a, a weather under the lake or something like that, where there's a, there's a reason, it's not just, we just don't wanna do it. There, there's a reason for them to do it. So that is built in now. Um, but it wouldn't pick something up.
But, um, we did another pool easement.
It was on Winter's Landing. I think it was in Winter's Landing, cause it was, we did it along the.
Yeah.
Yeah, along the trail, right?
No, I thought it was.
Of that, obligated to itself.
I thought it was the one that backed up to that creek.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
We did like two or three of them.
Yeah.
In, in Oakland Park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably this time last year.
It was, yeah, I think there, I, I recall one where it was a couple of a lot. Um, and. Okay.
So they are pulling permits now on their last phases, um, seven, uh, yeah, seven south. Um, they've, I think they've pulled four or five now.
Yeah.
Reforms from seven south.
And that's, and then they're starting development on the last phase, huh?
Seven north issue.
Are they doing good, Mike? You happy with this apartment?
Yes, apart, they're good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll give you a real, real quick fact to their uh. wastewater treatment, so. You know, subject.
Well, that would be a matter of, uh, air load, fake water guard now, so. Uh, we can always bring it up.
Sure, if I could, I'll give you a real quick rundown of projects that are out there and where they are on the big ones, just so y'all are aware. Um, I'll start with the Grove, the forty unit subdivision here, they are, they have submitted for their plat. So the plat review has begun, they're still going through final engineering review. Um, I talked to Mike today, there's some other issues with public works to be worked out, but that's moving forward, so I I, that should be probably in the next couple of months, ready to go. The Grove, Bayview John's Landing.
Stop me at the Grove real quick, uh, the Grove. So we we made it very clear and critical about the tree saves out there. So all those are.
They're all shown on the plan to be saved as.
Someone from the town's gonna be watching that like a hawk to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, we're in, is, I mean, I'm not here all the time, but yes, we will.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Yes, yes, well, and what happens when we'll go out to do our checks during construction? That'll be one of the checks we'll do while we're out there, make sure the trees that are there are still there. Um, but yes, it it it's an important one there. Bayview John's Landing, they're about the same position, they're going, they they actually have their St. John's permit. This is the one at the end of Remington Road, the twenty unit, um, they haven't resubmitted to the town yet, final engineering, so they should be coming through on plat fairly soon. Um, with that one, um, the other big one, just we'll get, we can this one, Briley Farms. Um, we've had several meetings over the last month with the owners of Fays One A and One B and um, Daniel's Co., which is Steve Healy and Franco Scalia. Um, what you may be seeing coming for you here soon will be a PD amendment to bring this all together as one PD for Briley Farms. To make it much cleaner and clearer and also to make it much more defined on what their development standards are, because right now that's where our big disconnect is with what the current owners of those two pieces are trying to do. Um, but we're working through this very hardly, very hard and um, but that should be coming pretty quickly if they do what they told us. We had a meeting last Wednesday with the group, with the development group, and um, they agreed to do that. So I think that'll be very beneficial, get rid of these kind of piecemeal pieces, bring it all together, because when I go back and look at the history, that appears to, early on, how it was always presented, it's Briley Farms project, one A, one B, two, and 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 what's going on now with that, this part wants to do it this way and this part wants to do it that way and we want to bring it all together and have one. So that should become due here next, probably two months or so, maybe quicker. I think those are all the big things, and then the maintenance I spoke about earlier. That's all the big, big things happen.
All right, cool. Anything else? Call tonight, we're adjourned.